Call the meeting to order at 7:02 PM. And they'll first review the script for remotely conducted open meetings. And as a preliminary matter, this is the Grafton Board of Library Trustees meeting. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Marty.
Here.
Stephanie.
Here.
Aaron.
Here.
John.
Here.
Okay, Doug.
Here.
Okay, and staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Beth?
Here.
And Debbie?
Here.
Okay, and good evening, everyone. This open meeting of the Grafton Board of Library Trustees is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings, and as such, the governor's order suspends the requirement of the public meeting, the open meeting law, to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of the public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order, which you can find posted on the town's website, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely, so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. For this meeting, the Grafton Board of Library Trustees is convening by Zoom, as posted on the town's website. Please note that this meeting is being recorded, and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you, and that take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. All supporting materials that have been provided, members of this body are available on the town's website unless otherwise noted. The public is encouraged to follow along using the agenda unless I note otherwise. There are, we are now turning to the first item of the agenda. Before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business, and to ensure accurate meeting minutes, meeting minutes, sorry about that. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, I will go down the line of members, inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold your name until, please hold your comments until your name is called. Further, please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking, and please remember to speak clearly in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until the chair yields the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in colloquy with other members, please do so through the chair, taking care to identify yourself. And finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by a roll vote, roll call vote. Okay, and given that, we'll start with our first meeting agenda, which is to approve the minutes of the September 28th meeting. So do I have a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve the meeting minutes.
Okay, any second?
A second.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, we'll take a vote in that case. I'm just gonna go through my screen here. Marty?
Martin Essner, aye.
All right, Stephanie?
Stephanie, aye.
All right, oh, wait a minute, everybody just, all right, Aaron?
Aaron, aye.
John?
John, aye.
Doug?
Doug, aye.
Okay, thank you. The motion has passed. Next item agenda is to approve the bills, fiscal year 23 warrants 14 through 17. Do I have a motion? Anyone?
I make a motion to approve the warrants 15 through 17.
14 through 17.
Oh, sorry, 14, 14 through 17.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion or questions? All right, hearing none. We'll do the vote now. Martin?
Martin Essner, aye.
And Stephanie?
Stephanie, aye.
Aaron?
Aaron, aye.
John?
John, aye.
Doug?
Aye.
All right, did clear that motion pass. Next, we'll move on to ongoing business.
Excuse me, Karen? What? Sorry, can I just interrupt? Could we, just so that everybody can see, can we put the agenda back up?
Okay.
Thanks, Beth.
Okay, and so Beth, can you give us an update on the building program and grant, please?
Sure. So HVAC, HVAC is still outstanding as the only punch list item. It's under commissioning. We just had a library building and planning and building, planning and building committee meeting, where we agreed to move forward with accepting $1,600 in additional work for Colliers, who's doing the commissioning for us, because of the extra work that we had done, or we're holding to the contract that we had to have done. The project has dragged out longer than expected. You know, there's gonna be an additional charge for that additional commissioning. But we're not over budget, so we can afford to do that work. There are two outstanding HVAC issues. One is that there's a defective part that's covered under warranty for the children's program room, that's making it rather cold in there, and we're not able to regulate that temperature. So you may see some children's programming taking place in the large community room instead, because that is temperature controlled. And then we have a bigger issue in that the teen librarian's office temperature has fluctuated wildly, because it does not have an independent thermostat, just by design. We asked for zone spaces, but did not specify that every office should have its own thermostat. So the temperature has fluctuated wildly all summer. It was, you know, 81 degrees at one point. We finally said, this is like against OSHA guidelines, and then all of a sudden it dropped between 60 to 60, 61 to 64 degrees. So staff have continued to monitor it, but we did have an anonymous phone call placed to Mass Board of Labor, who's now following our case for the teen librarian staff office as not being in that 68 to 76 degree controllable temperature guideline. And William Blake helping me to keep on top of that. LG, the thermostat company, was out with veterans earlier this week to try and look again and make some adjustments. We approved at our building committee meeting the proposal to add doors to the teen maker space and to the presentation area in the community room. This has been part of the project all along, but as designed, we couldn't make split folding, not folding, but split on a rail barn doors work for either of those two spaces, as we had hoped and intended. So we've spent 15 months now trying to come up with a different solution that had to include lightweight, so that the doors could move and close and open. And in the teen space in particular, some kind of frame with glass or plexiglass see-through paneling, as opposed to a wood door that you had just closed. So we've got a partial credit for a humidifier that we haven't finished, as well as for the original door proposal. It will cost some money, but still seems to be within scope of projects, so we did vote to approve. They're gonna be like a bi-fold aluminum-framed door, folding doors for the presentation area outside of the community room to block off the kitchen, which will be particularly useful for any catered events, which we believe we are moving towards. So to be able to close that off and do prep in the kitchen or in the presentation area, and then open the doors and have people get food. And for the maker space, so that we can close off that space when there is a teen program taking place, or even if we're just keeping that 3D printer in there and running it to, you know, make it so that it's not accessible to the public. The teen room door will lock from the outside, so we can close it off. But the presentation area will just fold open and closed. Presentation area doors will have a film on them. And the teen room doors will have some kind of a design, probably similar to what you see in glass throughout the building, that's the full plate glass, so that nobody bangs into the glass. I am getting some intense pressure from Mass Board of Library Commissioners to finish the construction reporting. I'm behind. I still have to do July and August. I was very successful in getting accounting to help me out, to let me know how much interest we have generated on banking, the grant reimbursements that we've gotten, and how much we have spent to date. The hard part that remains, that I'm struggling to make time for, given all the other job duties that I have, is going back and splitting all the invoices to designate out the ineligible versus eligible costs. And I could really use some volunteer help with that. It's going through a lot of material. But they need, MLBLC needs a figure. They are accountable to their auditor for what percentage of the money was eligible cost, things like steel infrastructure for shelving versus ineligible costs, things like computers and peripherals, and the wooden tops and sides for shelving. Construction work remains a huge part of my day-to-day work. I have some relief with William Blake taking on some outstanding items, like helping us to get display case handles for the display case down in the lobby. And, you know, meeting with people as needed. So that's been very helpful. We have received an estimated three grant payments to date. We would expect another one, notification of another one this April or May, with money coming in June or July, and then similar next year as well. But because multiple libraries that have been moving forward on the waiting list have now gone to their communities with projects that have doubled in cost, you know, they have to secure their matching funding by January 2023. And if you're following the news, Westboro's vote failed because their project doubled in price. So now a 50% matching grant is a 25% matching grant. And another library, I forget if it was CCONC or another one, has also failed. So the bad news, it's bad news for them and for those communities, but it could mean that if half or more of those nine libraries, pardon me, on the waiting list going for their funding fail in January, then Grafton may see an increase in our grant amount this year, or even get our two final payments. Also, we are moving forward with LEED certification. We lost a point or two with things like not actually having the right kind of energy star rated appliances. But there were opportunities to make up points, including once the HVAC commissioning is done, we can do a survey with occupants for whether they're able to tailor their space to a comfortable temperature, and like, that's another point. So I'm confident that we will get our Silver LEED certification, hopefully by the end of the year if the HVAC commissioning finishes. And that's an additional $165,000, which gives us some money, you know, to do things like finish the humidifier piece for the historical materials room, or kick in the rest of the money for these bi-fold doors in two locations. We had also committed to roof screens that Historic District Commission wanted to put up on the roof to shield the HVAC units. So that's what I have for now. I'm happy to take grant questions.
Hi, are there any questions or comments? Stephanie?
Hi, Beth. I know that we talked about some of these things earlier in the month. I just didn't know. I know the part that we're waiting for in connection with the children's programming room, there wasn't a timeline on when they would be able to get that in. Have they been able to provide that for you?
No.
Okay, and so then my follow-up question is, so, you know, thank you for providing us with the solution of continuing the children's programming for the time being, but does that mean that we are going to be forced to limit the children's programming in the future before this is fixed, or are we kind of putting a hold on that room to ensure that the programming still is moving forward?
I don't think we have to limit children's programming, because we do have the community room available. And that tends to see its most use in the evenings, when, you know, large groups like homeowners association, or Republican Town Committee, or legal women voters want to have their meetings, or Girl and Boy Scouts. So there isn't a ton of demand for those larger spaces, for the community room, either side, A or B, in the morning. So I don't think it will be an issue. There was, I thought, mentioned too, of the supplemental heating source could be provided. So that's something that I would have William explore if we decided to go that route. Presumably, it would be provided at no cost, because it's like a warranty thing, right, and a warranty issue. But I will say that from a safety standpoint, we would want to make sure, like, we're not gonna bring in space heaters that kids could burn themselves on to a children's program space, and we have an alternative. And so I told Sarah, even if there's something happening, like, there's no reason that we couldn't, with advance notice, say, guess what, the storytime program is upstairs in the community room. I'm sorry, in the historic reading room, even. You know, at that time of day, people could still come in and grab their magazines, and then be on their way. She said, it's very loud. I said, I know, but we're, you know, not intending to be a silent library. And if it's a temporary fix, the community room.
All right, wonderful. And then Karen, if you don't mind, I have one more follow-up question. I know that we had connected and spoke about maybe the placement of the thermostat in the children's programming room was not providing accurate temperature, or allowing us to regulate the temperature appropriately. But I didn't hear that there was any discussion on potentially moving that to the center of the room, where it's going to kind of control that better and monitor it better. Has there been any discussion on moving that, or with building committee? It just was a problem over the summer, so I don't want it to continue to be one.
Not to my knowledge. I will follow up. Again, like, this has been delegated. Off my plate, so I will follow up with William. I did today express my concern that there is no independent thermostat for the children's librarian's office or the teen librarian's office, and not sure why those two offices were singled out, or why there was oversight of not giving them independent controls, but expecting that the children's workroom, which is a much larger space, could control the children's librarian's office and the maker space, could control the teen librarian's office. We do also have an issue of thermostats behind shelving in multiple other areas throughout the building, because it's like they didn't layer the plans on top of each other to look at the ductwork and the office, you know, furniture and and the thermostats. I would suspect, though, that thermostats have to go where the ductwork exists, or there would be an additional cost. So I will pass it on to William.
Okay, thank you so much.
Doug?
Just a point, Beth. I thought the children's room was the unit that has a valve issue, and that's one of the reasons it's not regulating, and that's getting covered under warranty. So I don't think it was determined it was actually the location of the thermostat. It's more something to do with the air handler that's getting corrected under warranty.
Yeah, it's not a valve. It's something else, so.
Right. Yep.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Stephanie, is that a new question, or is your hand still up?
Not a question, just more of a comment to Doug. I went in the library a few times over the last month and brought in an independent like thermostat, because I heard about the fluctuating temperatures in a few of these rooms, and so I wanted to put it somewhere else in the room, or the librarians also have them, so that they could, like, we could see the discrepancy. And so having two devices take temperature at different points of the room, one being the current corner that is kind of behind where the sink is, on the, like, and the glass to the main room in the children's space. And then having one sitting underneath, I believe it's the TV, in more in the middle of the room. There could be multiple degree differences. So I don't know that it officially was determined, but like, I witnessed that on several occasions. So that's why I brought it up.
Okay. All right, sounds like something that just needs to be mentioned and addressed there. So, all right. Anything else about the building grant? Construction? Nope. All right, the next item up is the fiscal year 22 budget update. So that's the one that we just closed, correct, Beth?
Yeah, that, that closed June 30th. We had some encumbrances, though, because we do spend right up to the end of that month, and then invoices come in. The end of the fiscal year was timed with a new accounting system for the entire town. So our encumbrances just got paid around the end of September, as they ironed out all the issues with the new software. We finished, we didn't spend the whole budget, in part because of staff managing and getting used to a new building. So we're turning over, I think, maybe $16,000 back to free cash, which is painful. We did meet our requirement for spending in educational materials, though, even though we didn't spend the entire book budget, because things like museum passes and the owl meeting device that the friends paid for, even a percentage of all the new computers and equipment that we bought under the grant, the $23,000 of hardware and software that we bought for people with a visual disability that was grant-funded, those all count toward our educational materials expenditure. We're required to spend 13% or allocate 13% of the budget on those expenses. So when I, I did the state aid heiress financial report, and we came out, okay, so we should be state aid eligible. Additionally, we were only open 37 weeks and one day, and we're required by law to be open 38 weeks. You remember that we had a delay with reopening after construction. However, because of COVID, they, MLBLC waived the hours open requirement. So we were short by six days, but it won't be an issue this year. It would be going forward for fiscal year 23, should we have to close the building. For some reason, it wasn't explainable by, you know, construction or something else. But FY23 budget is closed. We might still have an encumbrance or two trickling in. But it's done.
Great, thank you, Beth. And we'll go right into fiscal year 23.
So I'm disheartened to keep finding or getting invoices for things that are related, not to construction, but to the new building that are expected to be under our jurisdiction for building maintenance. An example would be the electronic vehicle charging station, which I was told was contracted for three years, which is the maximum we're allowed to do, I think, in our municipal government or by town bylaw. But I got a bill, because it turns out that that wasn't true. It was contracted for one year, and now it's been a year, and the bill is due. So that's like $900 that, you know, I asked all the right questions, didn't get the information, and couldn't put it in the budget. So it's being paid out of building maintenance. And, you know, when I bring these things up with Evan, he says, well, we're gonna, we're gonna look at everything again in December, and then, you know, we'll see where we need to move money. Or, you know, I've come to trustees to help cover some expenses. Another example would be Signet, our security system. So the company that put in the key card system that allows us to scan to get into the building, you know, for staff, and to monitor our cameras and our auto locking doors. You know, they put in the system at whatever, $1,000, handed over the manual, did some training, and walked away. And then I go, you know, and a couple staff are beside me are trained, but like, I go to put in the schedule for the door closings for the next year, and something goes wrong. Or we have a new staff member, so I'm like, all right, somebody retired. I changed the name on the card. You have the same permissions. Card doesn't work. And now we're calling Signet back, and whether they're onsite or remote, it's like at least a grand every time. So like, I brought a funding request to pay that bill. So we just continue to have unexpected costs to running our new building. We did get, remember, an extra $100,000 from the town for FY23 to manage our budget, and that bought us about $80,000 in contracted services, as well as some additional money for some additional staffing. But I just, you know, continue to watch it and be very concerned. Another issue is that our Xerox lease was not the, you know, straight $300 a month per machine that we anticipated, but also includes a charge for every single copy. And we charge, I think, actually, an expensive price for printing. 25, 20 cents black and white, and 50 cents for color, which is more than it costs to run the machine, but we don't have a lot of people coming in and printing. So we're not generating income to pay off the copier lease, as was intended when we decided to lease two copiers. And it's not clear to me how, how to get out of the contract for one of those machines. So like, that's, again, like, it's an unanticipated expense. We thought, we thought we would also have revenue from passport acceptance, but with the lack of staffing, we have not been able to reintroduce that. So that's, you know, it's $35 a pop every time someone came in for us to review and then mail their application. And we made a couple grand a year, and we don't have that anymore. And we have not been able to rent out our facility after hours unless a staff member is willing to stay and work with a group or stay for somebody's party or event. And I've done that a number of times. But I can only work so many hours a week. I believe that we are finally close to the locking gate. I was out of the building for New England Library Association Conference this week, when I think Chandler came to take a look at the door. I'm not sure if the OJ O'Brien, the door guy, has been in yet to change or add the lock for the gate at the bottom of the stairs. But like, so we've lost some expected and anticipated revenue that would go into our gift account to help offset some of the costs. So I'll just say that, you know, we're not over budget. But I'm concerned that building maintenance costs are exceeding what we anticipated, even with a cushion. And then we have a new cataloguer and haven't ordered books. So the book budget is low. If you looked at the entire budget, you'll see there's not a lot of spending on materials at the moment, but we are just now starting to order and have new materials coming in. I'm happy to take questions.
Hi, any questions from the trustees about the budget?
I guess it's somewhat related to the budget. So once we have the door in and we can have after-hour programs, do we have people that have either booked or been asking, because I thought we had a fair amount of interest in that room?
Yeah. So right now, I have, I think, 4-H group who wants it on a Sunday morning. I'm not able to come on Saturday morning to drive an hour and open the building for them. I'm just not. So once we can lock off that floor, they can rent our space, you know.
Yeah, that's what I mean. Once, once we can lock off that space, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. I have been willing to stay, like, late on Friday or come back on Saturday for partnership organizations. You know, we just had a whole thing with Smallstones. But, you know, I have someone who wants a birthday party. We have somebody who is planning to do piano recitals at least twice a year. So there is interest, and it is gonna make money. So I think.
Would it be useful to have a second or third person that's available, you know, so that the three, the three of you or two of you can be available to let people in after hours if you're not available?
There won't be any need. The whole, the whole idea is that there's no staff intervention needed, that we lock the elevator, we lock all the doors, and we lock the gate. We hand the person the Sunday key card.
Okay, so you have the key card to get into the front.
Yeah, and then they would have to just, like, prop the program room door open. Or we'd have to schedule the doors, I guess. And they would have to have a separate code for the alarm and set the code on their way out.
Okay, so was there an estimated timeframe for getting the the door on the stairs completed?
So it needs a lock, and it needs a wheel. And again, I was out. I thought that Chandler was coming in Monday, but I have to be honest, I haven't gone down to look to see if it's been completed.
Okay. All right, any?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Any other questions? If not, we'll move on to the IT update. You mentioned a few IT things already. Is there any other news with IT?
Yeah, we are in process of. Yeah, we are in process of getting a server set up so that all of our public computers, including all the checkoutable, is that a word? Laptops um will have deep freeze. So um Coughlin, Coughlin, not Coughlin, the new company, sorry, CMD was onsite today. Um, working on that. So they also need a separate wireless network. So still in process.
Oh, good. Yeah, we've been waiting for that.
Over a year.
Now, is that going to require any training for the staff or does it just automatically work?
That's a good question. We bought the enterprise version so that if something needed to be unlocked, we could do it from like by logging into a staff computer. But I won't know until they say, here it is, let's try it and let's uh, let's, let's play around with it. Um, the company had, doesn't have familiarity with it and has had to learn the system. As far as checking out the item, that's pretty straightforward. Like it has a barcode and an RFID tag. Someone will go to the desk, present a card, we'll check the item, the laptop out to them. If they walk out of the building with it, it will set off an alarm. And it will be able to print from inside the building to our Xerox.
Right, any questions about um IT? All right. Uh, Doug, we'll move on to you with a capital campaign update.
Yeah, so it's good news, right? Uh, I love my part because I always get to do the good news. But no, we um um, as you know, we ordered the capital campaign funded, the six park benches, um, which arrived maybe two months ago. Um, they're halfway done being put together. We met with the DPW. They're going to install the concrete pads in the front of the library for the um benches to get installed. So hopefully before the snow comes, we'll have some park benches out front. And I think other than that, we don't, I don't think we have an update from the capital campaign.
All right. Kind of, um, any questions for Doug? No, okay, and uh Beth, is there anything new with the uh Friends?
Um, I did attend their last meeting, which I think was last Tuesday night. They are not currently accepting donations because they have no space for donations. They have canceled their scheduled November book sale, but are now looking out toward a book sale, um, probably the week before school vacation. Where they will probably have use of half of the community room to, to do like a call for donations and take in donations. And then have the whole room to set up and then run their book sale and then have half the room um, to clear things out, which will tie up the community room for two to three weeks. Um, they are continuing their bag sales. There's two different sizes and you can ask at the, the desk in the lobby. Um, pay your cash or write a check to buy a bag. Um, they will be uh having a table at Grafton celebrates the holidays on December fourth to sell book bundles and bookmarks and push their memberships, which is wonderful. Um, I will ask formally again for a memorandum of understanding between either the town of Grafton and the Friends or the board and the Friends to clearly delineate who owns items that are donated and what the process is to take care of them and differentiate roles and responsibilities. Um, I've asked multiple times in my tenure, tenure, and it just hasn't happened. And I'd like to know how to move that forward.
From the, sorry, from the Friends perspective, what kind of items, can you give us a couple of examples of things that they've donated that you need some guidance on? Control?
Sure. So Policy Committee has a draft donation policy about what kinds of donations the library takes. For example, we don't have any policy to say yes or no if someone wants to donate artwork or a used computer or a used video game system. And it's not clear to me who actually owns the used books that get donated, because there is, has never been either a donation policy from the library or an understanding between the Friends and the Board or the Friends and the Town for who owns and can deal with or deal with those items. The library can't sell them. We also can't sell our weeded materials. So there's always been like this informal thing that's happening that really needs to be put into a policy and an understanding.
And Beth, and I think part of the discussion was also like, what if something that's donated could be used in the, in the collection?
Right.
And so can the library add it to the collection if it's recent and in good shape, or does that belong to the Friends to sell?
Yeah, and presumably there might be something that someone wants to donate that you don't want. And you'd, you'd probably want to point to a policy that says like, this is not material that we would collect.
Yeah, but I, but I can't move, we can't move forward with policy subcommittee and a donation policy until that under memorandum of un-understanding is clarified. Because I can't speak for the Friends when I say we take this or we don't take that. And, and even among staff, there's a question about like, do we take textbooks? And do we take Harlequins? I say, yes, people will buy Harlequins, but I, but I have staff saying, no, no, the Friends don't take those. I, I just need clarity.
So um, have the Friends indicated that they would like this memorandum of understanding as well, or is the library the sole person asking for this?
Well, it hasn't happened this whole time, so.
Okay. All right, I guess that's kind of like a joint meeting or a reach out type, type of thing. Okay. All right, Beth, thank you. Um, any other questions about the Friends? Yep, Aaron?
So Karen, if um, if this was an action item that you were designating for the board, um, I'd be happy to help you with that. Um, to, to put, to put forth this, you know, memo- memorandum of understanding. You know, so perhaps you and I could put our heads together and determine what's, what's required to get that working.
Yeah, yeah, I think that sounds like a great idea, because I think eventually that this will fall under the Policy Committee as well. So, all right, thank you, Aaron. All right, um, I did not notice from last month, um, was there a walkabout done for this month? I know we've talked a lot about some of the issues within the building, but is there anything else?
Yeah, Karen, I, yeah, I, I did a few, um. The reason that we didn't put it in a full report was because um largely a lot of the information came about regarding the teams and the team space, which um I know talking to you earlier. We're probably gonna break out, so I don't know when you want to discuss that. Um, there were a few other items that I have connected with Beth on, so she may be able to provide us an update because it's been a few weeks. For instance, there is um in the children's room, there is a toy train that our littles like to use. And it's at the perfect height for a lot of them to sit on. So it's um repeatedly been broken. And so um, there was discussion of looking to see if it was anchored on studs or if that needed to be lowered. Um, so I didn't, I do not know if that has been um fixed to this moment, but that was one of the things. And we did talk about um the different, the location of the cameras and um the exits from both the teen and the children's room spaces. So I noticed that even the doors that are marked emergency um do not seem to be alarmed. Either they are turned off or the batteries are not working. That was a discussion that I had with Beth onsite at that time. Um, it does seem that some were just um in need of replacing battery and others, there are some staff members at the library that shut that off so that the alarm does not go on all the time. Um, so I do think that that's something that we as a board need to discuss. Because if that's something that we're saying this needs to be armed, you do not have an option to shut this off. Um, because those doors are not supposed to be used as an entrance or exit, that that's something that we should discuss. Um, also, there are not cameras, uh Beth, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe there was not cameras that show the um emergency exit from either the children's room or the teen space to the outdoor patio. So I think that that also ends up being a safety issue. Um, where we do not know who is coming in or out if those are not alarmed, where in our new, you know, the back of the building, which is our new entrance, we have cameras. So even if someone's not taking out material, um, if something was to happen and police needed camera footage, we have that. Um, so that was my biggest concern that I would um like us to, to talk about, to be able to give Beth guidance and support to go back to her staff with. Um, and then the rest of it that has to do with the teen space, when you know, you give us that direction on, when we're discussing that, I'll bring up that part.
Okay, all right, thank you. Yeah, uh, very good points with the emergency exits and things like that.
The uh, the teen room door had a, a speaker in the door where you push the crash bar to open the door. And I worked with Joe O'Brien maybe a month and a half ago to make that functional. He had to key it and then we had to put in a battery and we tested it. And it was piercing. And we would have to leave a key in the cho- in the, the teen room so that they can turn it off when it goes off. So we didn't alarm it. And then the result of not turning on the alarm was that staff were encouraging kids to go out that door. So I put an end to that and then turned on the alarm. So if you exit the emergency exit in the teen room, the alarm will go off. And there is a key all the time now in the teen room for staff so that they can go over and stop the alarm from going off and then take a look to see who's going out the door. There still is not a camera and that's a separate issue. It turns out that the door in the children's program room has the speaker but not, has not been keyed and needs a battery. And then the one in the children's room going out from like between the window seats and by the computers. There's no speaker on the crash bar, but there are other exterior doors in the building that do have that speaker and you could just unscrew and swap it out. So I've asked William to bring that forward to ask the question, is this, like, should, should these all have had this feature? Are there right doors in the right spots? Are they exterior doors? And is this scope of project, in which case we just call Joe O'Brien Construction to come back and do those other two with two doors? Uh, or is this now an extra thing that we need to pay for? We're not, I mean, we're, we're a year past substantial completion and now even a year past our occupancy um date. So there might be some money involved, but I, I'm just, you know, like waiting to hear back. In terms of additional cameras, I need to follow up with Signet, again, the security company, who I asked for a quote, to install additional cameras, because we have great coverage if you get into a fender bender in the parking lot. But we don't actually have cameras in each doorway facing in and out, so you can capture people face out as they leave the building. Um, and then for the teen room, uh, I'm sorry, for the children's room patio, um, there's kind of a camera on the whole patio, but again, it's, it's like really not on the door and it's at an angle. So there, there are grants available um that I would pursue if somebody would be interested in helping to put that together, because we spent a lot of money on a security system, but we don't have cameras where we need them um on exits or interior or exterior exits down bathroom hallways. Um, and it was just an oversight in the design. There's two hands up, you're moderating those.
Yeah, um, John?
Yeah, I, I had a minor point about the, the train in the children's room. Um, I think I had actually repaired that one time because I happened to have some tools in my car. Um, and so I think it, I think it's just a poorly designed tool or not tool, uh, toy, I guess, or, or wall mounted thing. I think it's the thing on the rails, right? Um, and so I, I'm kind of thinking that's probably just gonna need to be replaced with something else more durable.
Okay.
We did shift over the, I don't know what the word is, but there, it's like a
Bracket thing.
Bar, bracket. So we shifted over the bracket so that the, the bar is not slipping down out of it. And we'll see, I would say if it falls apart again, we'll just take it off the wall. But um, you know, Tucker Interior is not taking back any deemed biased effective pieces.
All right, all right, thank you, John. Uh, Stephanie?
Hi, I um realize that I had another page to my notes, so I just want to throw that out. And some of this um Beth has already covered in the construction update, but I just want to um let you guys know for anybody who does the walkabout um next month. So we are still waiting for um the countertops in most it, I believe it's all of the library to actually be ADA compliant. So the countertops are not ADA compliant. Um, and so specifically in the um teen librarians' room, because of that, they have refused to kind of unpack and organize and use that space where um, you know, I didn't notice that in contrast in um upstairs and, and in the children's room, even though they're not compliant, they're, they're, are trying to make this space as function- functional as possible where we don't have a timeline for that. And so um there, there's glass windows into that office. And so I just, um, I think that we, construction wise, um need to figure out, like, get a timeline on when that is going to be fixed. I know it's something that we've been waiting on for for the past year for the building. Um, and then it also affects the completion of the Friends space. As far as like they're putting the vending machines in and then um, even in the interim, since we don't have a final deadline, I think that it would benefit us to instruct the librarians to still put away um their their supplies, um, so that their areas are organized and they can serve this um, the public more efficiently. And also from just a personal standpoint, when I looked in in that room, I was worried about safety if, if anyone was in that room and needed to get out and I understand that that would only be the teen librarians, but still, um, their safety is important. They would not be able to easily exit that if there was an emergency. So um that is um also wanted to put that on your radar.
Understood. Um, William is working on a proposal for which spaces we could start to do that counter and sync lowering. And um, we tend to finish up with storytime around Thanksgiving and then have a little bit of a lag. Um, we're anticipating it getting done before the end of this year. That will give us also our uh, our permanent certificate of occupancy, which is still outstanding because of that item.
Yeah. Excellent, thank you.
All right, thanks Stephanie for all of that. And uh Doug?
Just a quick update on the outs- outside space. There were a couple um bushes that didn't survive the summer. Um, those are getting replaced under warranty by the landscaping um contractor. And then we did work with, this is sort of a capital campaign, but as you know, the capital campaign funded the green roofs. Um, and part of that goes with maintenance for those green roofs. It was identified that we need to maintain those. Um, and the capital campaign will be funding that, but um, Beth and I took care of that uh recently also, that contract.
Okay.
That's it.
All right. Thanks for that. All right, any questions um about any with the walkabout? All right, uh, Beth, um, anything for uh COVID nineteen update?
Um, I think I'll just say that we're, you know, we, we would like to think COVID is gone, um, but it is not. Uh, and between people getting boosters, which we want them to do and folks being sick, um, or family being sick. It, it's contributed to a staffing issue. Um, you know, people are wondering, why is the room closed again? People are sick. We're still in a pandemic. So please mask. We don't have any mandate. Please masks.
All right, um, any question regarding um ongoing business here? Okay, uh, we'll move on to new business. Uh, first item, the teen room procedures.
So we uh, I'm assuming I'm taking the lead on this.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, that, that's what I was assuming.
Right, so uh, in, in the year since we've been open, we opened October thirteenth, we, you know, we're delighted to have kids come to the library in a way that they never before had before, you know, in To have kids come to the library in a way that they never before had before, you know, in the old building. They had a section of shelving and a table with six chairs and. So that they could have programming and be themselves and be kind of, we expect them to be loud and obnoxious and flirty and eat. Like to to run programming for them, we would just wait until the building was closed and do it on a Friday night. And we couldn't wait to have. To bring back Dungeons and Dragons, you know, during the day on Friday afternoon after school. Um, and I'm a huge, for those of you who don't know, I was a teen librarian for ten years. Um, helped create facility standards for teen spaces in Massachusetts. Um, served volunteer for a lot of time on the Young Adult Library Services Associations, various boards and committees. Um, and then made a living for several years. Going around to other libraries to try and help them cope with their teen behavior problems. Um, and I thought that I trained and modeled for staff how to differentiate between. Behavior that's disruptive and annoying, but not harmful. And behavior that is dangerous, illegal, or harmful to self or others or destructive. Um, and we did multiple different trainings. Sometimes it was a full day, sometimes it was with me, sometimes it was with another trainer. There was often time to role play and practice. For addressing, differentiating between those two things and then addressing it with three strikes and you're out. Here's our code of conduct, your behavior is loud and disruptive, we can't have it, you can change the behavior or you can leave. The second strike is a look, I saw you do that thing again and we have an agreement. The third time is thanks for coming, sorry you can't stay, it's time to go. Um, in the interest of trying to build relationships with new teen patrons as they came in over the last year, we were way too lenient and forgiving. Or didn't understand, like, when I tell you not to throw the pencil and the second time you don't throw a pencil, but you pinch your friend. Like, that's still not okay and that's still a strike. Right, so we had forty to sixty kids sometimes on half days. In a space technically designed for lots of kids. Um, but the reality is there's nineteen spots to put your butt in the teen room where all the books are. There's um, I'd say sixteen seats in the gaming space and a dozen seats plus three computer chairs, four computer chairs in the neighbor space. That's still a lot of people for a single person to manage. And there were days that Allison and Sarah and I were all down in the teen room. And as soon as you're addressing behavior with one group or asking them to please sit down and not block the fire exit and not block the fire extinguisher. They're up and moving and roving and on each other's laps and doing, again, typical teen things. It didn't often venture into that dangerous illegal. But sometimes, you know, kids were slapping each other on the butt and thinking that was funny. And then we had to have conversations about consent and assault. Um, and I also have a staff who are reluctant to call the police when a teen refused to leave. And they just didn't know how to handle it. So an example is somebody comes in, they want to sign up for a meeting room, you ask their name, they don't want to give their full name. And then because you ask their name, they fall to the floor and roll around for ten minutes pretending to cry. And we're just flummoxed, like, what, what do we do? We should be picking up the phone and calling the police and we're not. So again, a training was provided. We had sixty-eight incident reports over the last year of having to ask people to leave or destruction of property. Forty-nine of those were with teenagers in the after school hours. Um, and the room was out of control and it came to a head, um, you know. We're planning maybe on our part with not starting the new school year with a letter home to parents or working with principals. To say, here's our expectation, we don't want to have what we had last year. Meeting with kids in small groups, which is like something I walked around and did all during the school year. How are you today? I'm Beth, I'm the director. Here's our code of conduct, here's what we need from you. Does this make sense? Can you tell your friends? So that I'm not always the bad guy telling them to be quiet, to pick up after themselves, to be respectful. We need your help, but your space. And sometimes we could get kids on board, but we didn't do that in August, at the end of August when school started. So now two or three days into school, starting this year, we're pulling kids aside and saying, we're so glad you're here today. But you know, if you're under twelve, technically. You're not allowed to be here by yourself. If you're thirteen, you can be alone, but if you're twelve and under, a parent has to be on site. They don't have to be right there with you, but they have to be on site because Grafton Police says you're not old enough and it's not safe. It's a public building. You need to have an adult with you. So like, well, let it go today and now you have time to go home and let your family know. They don't have to be in the room, they can have a study room, but they have to be here for twelve or under. And that's hard. And you have twelve and thirteen year olds who are in seventh grade and their friends and one kid can be in the library and their friend can't. Behavior came to a head at the end of September and beginning of October with um. Teens becoming more outwardly violent towards staff in a variety of ways. Um, abusive, literally not just like falling down on the floor and being annoying, but violent language, sexually harassing language. Um, we had kids tell staff. Staff told one of our our patrons to not be there here anymore because of his language and his behavior. Responded with F you and then said he was gonna F and kill himself. You can fill in the blanks. And staff, some of who have been trained in suicidal ideation and some who have not. Took the F you personally and were more focused on that teen told me, oh, go off. Not, here's a teen in pain who's just threatened to kill himself. And that needs to be treated as a serious issue and they should have called nine one one right away and didn't. Um, then we had boys, a group of four boys aggressively riding their bicycles on a Saturday afternoon. And staff are thinking, alright, you know, it's the weekend, like the week is really hard after school, but deep breath for group, Saturday will be quieter. Now we have these boys who are aggressively riding their bikes in and out of traffic in the parking lot at patrons walking into the building. And at patron cars backing out and. Again, that like the staff didn't call the police because they're like, the the boys have left, so we don't know where they are and didn't think, they don't want to bother the police, so they didn't make the phone call. And a week later, when I was in on a Friday and they were doing it again. Um, and the patron come charging in to say, I just told that kid that I don't want to hit him, but he's right in my way. And he responded with F you, I'm like, yeah, the police are on their way. Um, and we ended up finally like doing a no trespass. And we had meetings and we had, again, like more, here's the incident report, here's what happened, here's how it was handled, here's how I need it to be handled. Let's go back to our training, differentiate between what's dangerous and disruptive versus disruptive. Um, I would say that I probably should have been stronger in disciplining staff who are not following directive and upholding our code of conduct. As they are directed in their job descriptions and that is my failing. Um, it came to a head that first week of October with staff frustrated, burned out and. Looking to the management team to solve this teen behavior problem. So at our management meeting, um, I said that I was willing to try something new. And they wanted to crack down on um, getting to know kids by name by requiring a library card to use the space, which I recognize as a barrier. Not what we intended and probably not the right thing to do, but I said we could try it. Um, and we started with. Everyone so fried on top of COVID, on top of the construction project to now be getting sworn at and sexually harassed. Um, and have your car aggressively driven at and spit on by kids. We need a break. So we shut down the teen room because of the behavior issues for five days. And then we reopened with a, we need to know who you are when you come in and you need to understand the rules that you need to follow. That not only do we have a basic, like a code of conduct, but there's basic public decorum. That can't, whatever you want to, I mean, blame it on, right, parents, COVID. Hormones, like all of those things coming together to create the situation. Um, so we cracked down with library cards and we heard loud and clear from the community that that was not the best thing to do. And when I called a meeting after a week with my staff to assess it, they wanted to continue to push it out for a month. I said, I don't, I don't think this is working. Um, and then staff expressed concern about people who are using. The library for legitimate versus just hanging around purposes. Um, and I took some offense to that because I don't believe we should be judging what people are doing in the building. We are here for everybody of all ages, for recreational, informational. Um, and you know, leisure, leisure purposes, it's all good as long as you follow the code of conduct. Um, so I asked for board support to recognize that this procedure we had instituted really was, even though we insisted. It's just, it's not policy, it's just a procedure. It really is, one, not in the spirit of our mission, two, not in the spirit of our code of conduct. Uh, and three, a a huge barrier to service, right? So we look to what Boston Public Library does. They have an active teen room. They ask kids to sign up when they come in. And they ask them to read through a modified code of conduct that's in language that's easy to understand for kids. What you can't do, here's the danger, here's the annoying stuff that we don't want, like leaving your trash all over the place. Here's the things that will get you kicked out immediately that we won't stand for, disrespect to staff. Uh, anything that breaks a state law damaging our property. The flip side is the closing the room for the five days and. Requiring the library card has resulted in kids not wanting to come back to the library and that relationship needs to be repaired. Um, and we are working to do that. Um, staff are feeling like all I do is monitor the kids and don't. I don't understand how to change the thinking to your role in the library is to build relationships with patrons. And just because you're not in the teen room doesn't mean that you're not serving teens. Or that the the teen behavior issue is the solely the problem of the teen services staff. So that's a, you know, we need some training and we need a little bit, I think of an attitudinal shift about that. Um, also librarians that serve youth are not just there for the collections or for the programs. But for teens especially, you're there because it's statistically proven that teens need at least three adult mentors in their lives. Who they're not related to, who they could go to in a time of crisis. Then we had a second instance of a teen expressing suicidal ideation in our teen room that was overheard. As all this behavior stuff was blowing up. Um, and that time we we did call nine one one and address it, but I I told the the patron, you know, we. Everyone gets depressed, but sometimes it gets more serious and like, we care about you and not because you're gonna grow up and be a taxpayer, but because you matter. Right now, and that's an attitude that I need, like my whole staff. To adopt, that we are here to help grow these kids into happy, healthy, contributing citizens. Um, because they, you know, they, because they matter right now, their development's important. But we can't do that effectively when there's sixty of them and one person in the teen room. So as it stands now, our procedure is like Boston, there's somebody at the door to greet you. Go over the rules, we make sure you sign the code of of conduct that says you're gonna. Hold yourself accountable for your behavior, at least in the teen space. There's nothing, though, that prevents someone who's sixteen or seventeen or thirteen. From using any other space in the library. Um, they're welcome to do that and there's not code of conduct required to be signed. Um, we consider just having a sign in sheet, but we want to be able to monitor it. Because again, the point is that, you know, I get to know so and so and, you know, you come in and I remember you the next day. And I say, hi Karen, how are you today? What's the tea? What's going on? Um, and not just, who's that kid? I still don't know. Like, we want them to make these personal and meaningful connections. And then as far as staffing the room, I think the intent of adding a person when we did. Was, you know, we're open sixty hours a week, kids are in school for some of that time. But I have a thirty-five hour and an eighteen hour person. And the thirty-five hour person is also a department head who has a responsibility. To work one night in the building and be manager on duty. So she's in the teen room, but then anyway, thirty, she's walking around doing rounds, checking locks, she's the person to go to if there is an issue or incident. And she happens to work on the night where we have a half day. Uh, my other employee is in library school and her class happens to be on Wednesday. Um, we had originally said that uh, we weren't going to be open anymore on half days because we actually don't have anybody scheduled. And moving scheduling. It's not impossible, but it's also problematic. And I have to recognize that some people have worked that same schedule for ten years. And yes, it may no longer work to meet the needs of our institution, but I still would need some time for people to have a schedule change. We are in the middle of unionizing. Um, and I I I've always thought that at least thirty days of notice was reasonable for a schedule change. But uh, going forward, we will be scheduling somebody in the room. Um, and I do want to make it clear that I do cover frequently in that room, um, that I do really love teenagers, even when they're being obnoxious and telling me. You know, F off. Because when they come back, I say, hey, how are you today? But I remember you got thrown out the other day, what was that about, what happened? And nine times out of ten, they're like, yeah, I was acting like a jerk, I was having a bad day. Sometimes they even tell you what's going on with them. Um, and that reconnection is important. And that's also something that, again, like I've modeled, I've trained on it. And it's, it's just not happening and I'm not clear why. Um, I'm not unwilling to go sit in the teen room and I had scheduled myself to sit down there this morning. Um, but the two, I had two night meetings and after fifteen months of doing multiple people's jobs. And not getting to my own administrative work, I can't work another twelve hour day. I just can't. I'm not physically, mentally or emotionally capable of it. Um, and I can't just, you know, deploy somebody from the children's room who doesn't have expertise or training or comfort. To go cover in the teen room. Um, it's called work for a reason, sure, and I have jurisdiction over scheduling. But we do try really hard to match people's expertise and comfort and interest to a space. And frankly, if you can't stand teenagers, you are not somebody that I want to put in the room. It would do more harm than good. So there've been lots of solutions that I've seen floating around about how to fix this problem. Um, but I think that I would like some compassion for the amount of burnout we've had. Um, for the recognition that we have a twenty-six thousand square foot building that is still not complete. Um, that still takes much of my time and attention and prevents me from doing some of my management work. And we are trying to find some solutions to that. Um, and that there is a need for not volunteers, but expert trained staff to work with this population. Um, and this is not a library problem, it is a town of Grafton problem. When the police responded to the kid with suicidal ideation, they said, why are you, what, what are you open on the half day for? You're, you're providing this free babysitting. I've never seen a town where the kids are just aimless and going in circles. The last half day, we didn't have anybody scheduled, I opened the room from twelve to one fifty, kids came in and sat and ate. They're mostly well behaved and at one o'clock, I said. Librarian's not in, um, we need to shut the room down. And they said, are we being kicked out? I said, you were behaving, but you know, you've been here since ten o'clock, it's probably just time to go somewhere else today before you wear out your welcome. And they all very happily and graciously exited. And then the next thing I knew is like a cop car at Cumbie's because somebody shoplifting and there's a brawl happening on the common. The library, while we do have space and we do have some staffing, we can't be the end all and be all. For growing those happy, healthy, contributing adult members of society in the town of Grafton. We don't have a teen center, we do have a rec department, we have after school programming. I thought we had a Grafton, like a healthy greater Grafton Coalition. Um, and I think myself, and I don't want to speak for anybody else, but the police department expressed some interest in also helping us solve this problem. Um, I'm happy to take questions or respond, um, if Karen wants to open up to input. About our teen room procedures and what's happening going forward, but um. It's a bigger problem than just thirteen year olds who don't know how to sit down and behave at the library and treat people with respect.
Alright, thank you so much, Beth, for, you know, that very detailed explanation of how we got here. And, you know, trying to solve a townwide problem, but with one institution. Um, we'll start with, um, I'll go alphabetically, Aaron.
Well, there we go. Uh, thank you, Beth. That was a great um, informative update. You know, the trustees aren't always um. Uh, able to be there as much as you and the staff are, and we appreciate that and and uh, upholding the policy that. You know, the trustees uh, approved for the library. The, the only. Comment I have uh, surrounding the um, the the sign in, I think that's a really smart idea. You know, first of all, to acknowledge the code of conduct in, um, as they walk in and. They're agreeing that they're gonna appropriately use the space. I think that's a really nice approach and I'm glad that, um, you know. Uh, that other libraries have successfully, um, you know, done that with their teen rooms. And I've seen the teen, the teen space in the Boston Public Library and. They don't have nearly as much traffic as I think Grafton's been seeing, um, but you know, maybe it wasn't there at the right time. But certainly, you made a really great point about. Um, greeting everybody who walks in that room. I mean, I know that's a lot of work and a lot of effort, but. I had this discussion at work the other day about, you know, Cumberland Farms, right? Um, do you ever notice how how they they greet you every time you walk in? It's, it's not really just a customer service thing, it is, but it's. It's letting you know that they see you and, I mean, they're only one person, right? So, and they're trying to manage the security of a place and, you know. But absolutely, so I think that's a really great point and to reconnect with, um, with people who may have been misbehaving the day before, like you said. Um, so I I really support that. I think that's a a great. So I I really support that. I think that's a a great, a great idea and I hope we start to see, you know, more traffic from the teens very soon.
Thank you, Aaron. Stephanie?
Thank you, Karen. So I just wanna kind of go back and elaborate more on my walkabout. As I said, I was going to circle back to that a little bit later. So that instance that Beth referred to where the police were called because a teenager had expressed suicidal ideations. I was there for that. That happened in front of me. Was brought immediately to the attention of the staff that was beside me. And then I'm satisfied with that response that I got. I actually went upstairs and interrupted Beth's staff meeting because I was concerned about at that moment, what appeared to be the lack of empathy for what this child was expressing. And it is not up to us or, you know, as the board or anybody who is on staff or volunteering at the library to make the call, whether they are joking around or this is conversation that the teens are having. And that's when the police really need to be brought in because they're the experts in that field and can redirect, determine if you know, what kind of help a child needs and connect with their parents. That is beyond our scope, but we do have a responsibility to make sure that all of our patrons are as safe as possible if we're hearing or seeing anything. When I was also in that room, what I witnessed, so the reason that I did a second walkabout was actually because the librarians themselves had reached out to the board and asked that we come witness what is happening. And just an overall feeling of being overwhelmed from all levels of of the librarians, you know, director down to part time, really just feeling like that they needed more support from the board or from the town. And so I went not to get involved, but just to kind of bear witness, to share with you guys. And I will say that in the forty-five minutes that I was there, kind of coming during when they said was busiest time for them between that that three and five o'clock hour was when this incident happened. And as soon as the police came, that library room emptied out. But before that, there was children using that space appropriately, looking for books, playing games. In the maker space, just sitting around having conversations. And then there was half of the population and and I took numbers so that I know it was half that was in that space, running around playing tag, throwing things at each other and the librarians. Stealing pieces of other people's games. And I was just kind of bearing witness to the lack of time that the librarian had to foster those positive relationships and interactions because they were being pulled to redirect behavior in in multiple different areas. So the interactions that the teens were having with the librarians that I witnessed were overall not positive because there wasn't any time for them to have any other kind of interaction. It was telling them to, you know, physically not touch each other. Not run around through the hallways, crashing into patrons, crashing into myself, not throwing the materials and I, you know, I really, I was not here when the board and and the town approved redoing the library. I grew up in town. Came back a few years ago and and the construction was already underway. So I'm not sure what the expectations the town had before this was, but I know from my, I think this is my fourth year on the board that Beth has continually advocated for the youth space, the teen space. And from my interactions connecting with Karen and and Beth and Evan. That is, you know, what's next on the agenda, the funding requests for additional training because I just didn't see that our librarians in that space had the tools that they needed to really like foster a great teen experience. So I just wanted to shed a little bit more light on that.
All right. Thanks, Stephanie. That'll be a great segue. That's next on the list, but I see Doug has his hand up.
Yeah, I mean, I won't reiterate. I mean, I agree and sympathize with the commentary that Stephanie and Erin said. We recognize it's a challenging situation. I I guess two things from my perspective and these aren't, I'm not offering a solution. These are just kind of questions, right? We could bring in what do you call them? Temporary. Temporary people, right? We can hire somebody. I don't, what's that? Biblio temp, thank you. I blanked out. I don't know if having an extra body, I mean, that doesn't sound like what the biblio temp would be doing, but you know, if there's an opportunity for us to bring in somebody on a temporary basis. I think we should, we should entertain that idea. And then my other question was teen programs. Are you, are you, have you been having teen programs and have those have been successful? Or is this just been disrupting those programs just too much?
Yes and yes. So there there is a regular schedule of teen programming. I had agreed that with notice I would come and usually I I pick up my kid at three o'clock. I've already put in more than forty hours for the week and I'm leaving at three o'clock on Friday. I've come back and offered to come back to help watch the room so that the teen staff can do a program. They elected to cancel the program that was scheduled for the twenty-first instead of having me come back. I also recommended that programming only take place on Monday and Tuesday afternoon because those are the two days where from two thirty to four, we have two staff members, meaning one could be in the room interacting and one could be running a program either in the maker space, the gaming room, or even in one of the community rooms. Because one of the things we found with trying to run a program and have the rest of the room open and only one person is, yeah, it started to get disruptive and we, even if we tried to say, you know what, we're doing a teen advisory board meeting. You're a teen. You clearly have an opinion about stuff. Come with us. Like they just wanted to be disruptive and say, you should get a roller coaster and that's not so helpful. And then, you know, the program gets disbanded. Another piece to recognize about the age group is they've just come out of a full day of school. All right, they're starving. They've been sitting and they want to move and they do not want to be programmed, even if it's a topic they are interested in. So we've done some pop-up programming at the beginning of, I think, this last school year. It was in the spring, they were reading. It might have been a Holocaust book, Jane Yolen, maybe Devil's Arithmetic. And someone's go, I have to read this for school. He goes, can you read it to me? Like you, you want to have teen story time? Like right now, you want me to read this book? And they're like, yes, like, okay. So we had a pop-up program where, you know, I read a chapter of the Devil's Arithmetic to thirty or so seventh graders and like they actually sat and listened and then they were done after an hour. But it's it's been very hard to say either that there's DIY programming and you can come in and you can make a thing and take it home or take sometimes taking a a packet home and doing that at home has been successful. But a lot of the times, if we've got just the art material out, then the kids who want to do it will do it. But then they're interrupted and distracted by the kids who start going through the drawers while they're trying to sit at the table and draw. And now somebody's trying to make a water balloon out of the rubber glove that they found. Which, you know, the librarian can't be monitoring even that drop in DIY program because we're dealing with the behavior issue over by the emergency door. We also do have one of the two gaming systems set up. So that's been kind of a you know, if you're looking for something to do, we have the board names on on the table. You can sign it for a controller and that counts as a program. And they'll play for a little bit, but like the gaming isn't on all the time and encouraging a drop-in situation. That could be changed, but but I think a huge piece to recognize is just, it's not a it's just not an age group that wants to come to their come to the library and just do a program. And and part of it, part of it's just, you know, their age and their development. And remember that we have huge storytime numbers and huge children's books circulation because those kids are put in a car seat and driven to the library and carried in by their parents and that just doesn't happen with teens. So, but Aunt May Club that that Sarah's running has been popular. She also runs a manga book discussion group. We've experimented with some evening movie nights that have had mixed success. Some of the DIY programming has had some success. Teen Advisory Board, if we move it online, has had some. And we're looking to bring back Dungeons and Dragons, but you know, we 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 just can't add a Friday night thing. It has to be, you know, during the day. And they were looking for a facilitator because it used to be run by teens, for teens. And all those kids have moved on and graduated. So we've been waiting for an adult volunteer who said they'd hope to finish that application and get that up and running again for us. Lack of interest or ideas for programming, but it's, you know, with teen services, everything has to come from the kids. Like they should be the ones saying, we want this program and even I'll help run this program. For it to truly be a success. And that is the model.
That all makes sense, Beth. So the first two well, the first funding request you have is some staff training about behaviors. So and if you want to tell us a little bit about some of these funding requests that you have and then we can vote on those.
We do have a public comment in the chat. Am I or you to share those?
Oh, yep, I'm not. I somehow didn't see anything and, oh, wait a minute. Oh, I ju- I just saw it from Nancy. Sorry, I've got. All right, um, yeah, I'll read that. Nancy, he typed in, I feel so sorry for Beth. Why is everything her responsibility? Her duties are impossible and she in the li- library or suffering seems very unfair.
I'm the director. I expect a degree of flack and accountability. So, yeah. Territory. So we have
Yeah.
Yeah, but but definitely the responsibility of this group to see how we can help.
Yeah, and I think this problem, it did not that it came up all at once, but I think it just kind of simmered and grew until it exploded. And that sort of thing, kind of like the frog boiling in water until it's like and things like that. And I definitely hope that now that it is front and center on the radar. It can be looked at as more than just your problem, more than just the teen room problem, but it it really is a much larger problem and especially I think townwide, if we have teens, you know, you know, with talk of suicide, that is a major issue.
And you know, we we had Kate, who was a bibliotemp and she overheard something last fall. And we figured out how we were going to address it. We weren't able to identify the kid to actually follow up, but that spurred a social services handout at bookmark. I think it's called GPL cares. You know, beca- because we do have empathy and it it's not just a teen problem either. Like things are really bad mentally for a lot of people. So so I am still looking into, I think I delegated to Debbie, actually. Thank you, Debbie. There there is a Massachusetts Suicide Awareness Coalition. For those who don't know, October is mental, National Mental Health Screening and Suicide Awareness Month. And we've done a whole bunch of programming that culminates in our emotional wellness week this week with goats and giggles and a whole bunch of wellness workshops on Saturday. Some alleviation and stress relief. But this this first training is called Good Kids, Bad Behavior. It's Dr. Steve Albrecht. He does a lot of library training. And this is a training that a few staff went to because Shrewsbury Public Library offered it to the public. And some of our staff members went and brought it back and said it was really great. So this isn't like my friend Steve. This is like a nationally known speaker who has been vetted and requested by staff for five hundred dollars. We get a webinar link and everybody can take it on their own time. It is just one time, five hundred bucks.
Right, but but it's for everyone on the staff, correct?
On the staff, we will designate some time to do it, like we can pay people to come from nine to ten and watch it. Or eight thirty to nine thirty and have some discussion. And if you can't make it, you'll watch it on your own time. And then the second one is actually a year's worth of training. It's a three and a half hour kickoff, which you can again, do all at once or in parts. And and the the lens is homelessness and trauma and mental health issues. But a lot, you know, lots of things that you say that we could say about patron problem behavior in the library. Again, it's, it doesn't just apply to teenagers. So this is kind of a general, how do we help a traumatized population? How do we cope with suddenly being social services when that is not our library background and training? And how can we be proactive and help people get what they need and connect them to resources? And then there's like ten other hour-long workshops, one of which is specifically dealing with the teen population. Library. And I'm not clear actually on if we, you know, start with a three and a half hour thing and then have to do it in a specific order, or if we can jump to, no, we want to do the teen one next to see this person Ryan Dowd's perspective and how that's different from Dr. Steve Albrecht, just so we can get some tools under our belts. And then in addition, we're looking for a suicidal ideation awareness training that we could also have all staff do. But you know, I think especially Allison, our team head of teen services has already had two and I've been to one. But I think that it's just vital and we have to take it seriously every time we hear it.
Correct. Yes. Yes, Nancy, we'll get to that one in just a minute. All right, since we talked about those two, why don't we vote on numbers one and two because they kind of go together here? So do I have a motion for the funding requests one and two?
I make a motion to approve the staff training funding requests one and two.
Okay, very good. A second, please?
Second.
All right, all in. All right, um, let's see. Any discussion or other questions? Let's see, Aaron?
I'm sorry, I I tuned out for just a moment. So on line number two. Can can you repeat maybe what that one's intend intended for? Is it truly addressed about homelessness and and working with people who may be homeless in the Grafton Library?
The the name of the entire training is the Homelessness Institute. But it covers more than just the homeless population, which truthfully, we don't see a lot of. But it's it's about taking on social work that has become traditional library work. Kind of through the lens of how do we help traumatize people of all ages, marginalized people of all ages? And how do we deal specifically with, you know, disgruntled patrons, disruptive patrons, and again, of all ages? And as part of this year-long training, which starts with a three and a half hour workshop that addresses homeless and and you know, downtrodden, we'll say downtrodden and mentally ill people in the building as additional workshops, including one that's teen specific. But but because it like, again, it's it's not just a teen behavior issue. It's staff telling somebody at the public computer. I'm sorry, we we don't have that available for you. Getting into a heated debate where the patron is yelling at the staff member, the staff member goes in and like tries to apologize to say, yeah, I'm sorry if that got, you know, heated because of the discussion we were having and the patron bursts into tears. And this is an adult patron. It's this, we don't just have a teen behavior problem in the library. We have traumatized staff dealing with a traumatized public who need a more holistic approach than just here's how we take care of teen issues in the library. So it's two separate things that I'm asking for.
Yeah.
One's one time, the other's a year. They're all webinar.
Yeah, you're right. So so I guess my my only point was, you know, is this the right time for this now? But it seems that it is because it supports you throughout the entire year and you'll make use of it. I I didn't know if it made sense to start it now or in a month from now.
They'll stagger it.
Okay, it's yeah, up to you when you start it, but no, I support this. Thank you.
Okay, Doug?
Really the same question. I I think the staff has enough on their mind that the first one to me is the one to do first. And whether or not we approve just one or we just approve the second one and and you do that in, you know, a couple of months or something like that. But I'm assuming even if it's one training, it's going to take you weeks and whatever time to figure out your plan. That you're not going to have time for number two.
I think if we approve both of these tonight, then they can be spent at the appropriate time.
And do we need a funding source to be included in the motion? Because we'll need to say whether it's state aid or not.
All right, yeah, because would this be state aid, Beth? Because I know we had zero All right, yeah, because would this be state aid, Beth? Because I know we had zeroed out this line.
Yeah.
All right. So if um, someone wants to amend the thank you for mentioning that.
I'm sure so I will amend um, the motion. Oh, I put forth the motion to approve the staff training, one and two, to be funded out of state aid.
Okay.
Uh, one thousand ninety-eight dollars total.
All right, one thousand ninety-eight dollars out of stated. Okay, um, I don't remember if I have to say any other further discussion on that now that we've amended.
I think you just need to get a second.
Okay.
So I second.
You second. Okay, great. All right, and I'll start going around. Um, Doug?
Um, am I seconding it or am I eyeing it?
You are eyeing.
Okay, I.
All right, Stephanie?
I.
Aaron?
Aaron, I.
Martin?
Martin, I.
John?
John, I.
Karen, I. All right, motion passed. And the next thing up for funding is the signet bill for the security system. Yep, Beth?
Can I just go back to address um, another comment in the chat, which is our.
Certainly, yep.
Are all library staff mandated reporters or is Beth the only one? Library staff are not mandated reporters. Mandated reporter means that we directly call DCF. There is no parent intervention. There may not be police intervention. Right? You just completely bypass it. You don't care what the story is. You see something, you report it. And that that's what our, my understanding of that's what happens in the school system. I would say we have a community responsibility that if we see somebody who walks into our building, who looks like they just got beat up, we go to them and say, are you okay? Do you need services? Without calling the police to come necessarily and deal with it. If there's a kid that expresses suicidation ideation and we care about that kid, we might go over to them and say, listen, I just heard you say this thing. Do you like, I've had training. Do you really mean that? Do you have a plan? Do you have a safety plan? Is there somebody I can call? Are you really going to hurt yourself? Because I don't, I couldn't bear it if anything happened to you. I let you walk out of here and you did something. Can you promise me you'll be safe for just fifteen minutes and I'm going to see if I can get somebody to help? Or you could go right to, I don't feel equipped to deal with it, but I heard it and I take it seriously and I'm calling the police. And no, we're not mandated to do it, but I think we have a community responsibility. To be aware of and respond, even when we don't have all the training that we need. Um, and it feels scary and hard to do. Yeah, difference between, I think, again, mandated reporter, write to DCF or police. Library staff might do more intervention. And I, it's responsible, the responsibility of all staff and all patrons to take care of each other as a community. Thank you. Get off my.
Okay, um, signet bill for the security system.
I will say there's a, there's going to be another one coming. I didn't pull it up, but um, again, we uh, had a new staff member. I thought I just transferred the old card to her name. She can't get in the building. Signet has to come on site and do something to make it. Um, our censor that their card reader is apparently faulty. It stopped working this morning and someone is coming out to repair it. Friday, there, again, like we didn't, but we build it, budgeted for building maintenance, but not specifically for security. Things to go wrong with our new security system. This bill is for coming in and making key card corrections. They also did all the door closing schedules for the next year because we just voted on our calendar last our last meeting. But it's over a grand.
Okay, is this out of state aid, Beth?
This will be out of state aid, yeah.
Okay, all right. So um, can I have a motion? Aaron, thank you for being so quick.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve the signet bill for the security system uh, for in the amount of uh, one thousand three hundred thirty-two dollars and fifty cents from state aid.
Okay, second.
I will second the motion.
All right, any discussion? Well, all right.
All right, just to clarify, this, like to make a, when you get a new staff or someone's card's not working, that's not something you can replace on your own? You have to have them come in and do it?
I did do it. Like I I got training. I took notes. I did it. I thought that it worked and it didn't work. And going back and staring and comparing and having somebody else look at it, like we couldn't figure out what piece we were missing. It is an overly complicated system. So I.
And is it, and is it, is it unique to the library or does any other buildings in town use that signet?
Just us. Just us, yeah.
All right, thanks.
So do you see this happening going forward or? Or is it just hard to tell?
It's it's hard to tell. So I, one of the things I had them do the last time they were in is I said eventually we are going to need a card for access to get in at like ten AM or nine AM Sunday. All the way up to if you have a meeting starting at six or seven or eight on Sunday or a party, like we need a card that's good for a certain number of hours on Sunday. Can you set that up for me? So they did, but the only way to test it is for me to come in on Sunday and scan it and see if it works.
Mm hmm. Well, we can ta- talk about a way to.
Yeah, one of us can help.
Them try and fix it remotely or.
All right, um, Aaron?
So, um, I mean, that that's a chunk of change, right? Um, and and I don't know if they have like a like a help desk that you can call and they can remote in and take a look.
Grace, sorry, same person, you're using prevailing wage and this is the bill that I got.
Yeah. Um, so I think my, what might be a a good um, suggestion, right? So that it's not so critical that we need to call them, right, is uh, potentially do some practice. I don't know if it it means just like grabbing a card one day, um, you know, lighting it up for a certain door in the building, testing it out. I mean, I used to manage security systems for other companies I worked with. And before we ever gave a badge out to anybody, I would always be the one sitting there testing it, right? I mean, we we, the systems were a little bit easier to manage and maintain ourselves. Um, and um, you know, we got pretty good at it. But you know, certainly testing them and maybe even practicing from time to time may may help alleviate. Um, you know, we need this now, now, now kind of thing.
Yeah.
So, but but I support this.
Okay. All right, um, if we're ready to vote, I'll start with um, Doug.
We didn't catch that, Doug.
We didn't catch it, yeah.
I, I.
Uh, Stephanie?
I.
Aaron?
I, I.
All right, Martin?
Martin, I.
John?
John, I.
Uh, and Karen, I. All right, that's passed. Um, the next thing up is the Massachusetts Library Trustees Association. It's an annual membership for all members of the board for a hundred dollars a year. And um, this is something that we tend to fund on an annual basis from state aid. Um, let's see, and um, Debbie, Aaron, John and I attended the annual meeting last weekend in Shrewsbury. And it was very informative. So, um, do I have, and this would be paid out of state aid. Uh, do I have a motion? Yeah, Aaron?
I make a motion to um, approve uh, the MLTA annual membership for uh, one hundred dollars for the whole board.
All right, thank you. A second?
I second the motion.
All right, any further discussion? Oh, okay, so we'll vote on that. Um, Doug?
I.
Stephanie?
I.
Oh, Aaron?
Did I say state aid? Did anybody hear me say stated?
I don't remember.
Okay, great. Sorry.
Okay, so do we, uh, Debbie, do we need to amend it to add state aid?
I think so, if you've done it with the other one, the other, all the other.
All right, so um, I make a motion to amend um, to include the MLTA will be paid out of state aid. Yes, Aaron?
Yeah, just a point of order. I I don't believe you leading the meeting is able to to bring the motion.
Most likely not.
To do that.
Right, so Aaron, would you like to, since you're already.
I will happily. Um, so I'd like to amend the the motion on the floor to uh, read that the MLTA annual membership uh, for the board will be paid out of state aid money for in the amount of a hundred dollars.
Okay, all right, uh, second?
I second.
Okay, all right, any further discussion? All right, we'll start over again. Doug?
Doug, I.
Stephanie?
I.
Aaron?
Aaron, I.
Martin?
Martin, I.
John?
John, I.
Karen, I. All right, that motion is carried. And then the October volunteer request, I think, Beth, you were saying you're looking for friends and trustees to be at the library Monday, five to eight in costumes, if available, to kind of just guide people in. And there's going to be trick or treating available and uh, the bathrooms are always a hit on this night. So should we just email you if we're able to go? So you have some idea of who's going to be there?
Yes, please.
Okay. All right, so if everyone on the trustees just email Beth if you're able to go for either the full three hours or part of the time. Um, I was there last year and the kids are just adorable, so. All right. Okay, that finishes up new business uh, policy update. I'll hand this over to you, Aaron.
Great, thank you, Karen. Um, so the uh, the MLTA um, annual membership for the board, um, you know, segues nice into um, what I, uh, what we're going to discuss tonight. Um, the focus of the discussion uh, on um, the MLTA meeting, uh, we, they had a um, a speaker talk to us about a lot of the challenges that that libraries face. Um, and a lot of the challenges that libraries didn't think they'd really be signing up for. You know, you you become a librarian to you know, to to help the public. Um, you love the mission of the libraries. Um, you don't often you know, uh, think that you might have to deal with things like a um, you know, a civil rights audit or um, you know, people showing up, you know, um, with 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 weapons, you know, barring people from going to programs that they disapprove of. I'm not saying that this, this is typically something that happens in Grafton, but you know, that's what libraries are facing um, throughout the country. And the message, you know, for the trustees is that, um, you know, really how how we deal with those sort of situations is 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 through policy. You know, uh, the importance for a trustee to to know the library's policy and to support our staff who are enforcing uh, said policies. Um, and always review policies for reconsideration. I mean, I was talking to a trustee from another town. And I think they said that at one point, some of their policies were from the nineties, right? So it's really truly important that we review, you know, these policies um, uh, often. And you know, lastly, just make sure that we in in the library staff are, you know, understanding that we're following them to the letter, right? Because if you don't follow them to the letter, then there's a lot of, um, you know, there can be discrepancies and and challenges. But uh, so that kind of segues nice into something that um, the the um, policy committee uh, discussed. Um, and really this kind of came up uh, from um, I guess that we had a few weeks ago, and I'm going to say this wrong, uh, because I know they changed their name. The Disabilities Commission joined us. But one of the things that we came up with is um, putting together some verbiage for uh, an appeals process. Um, so that, you know, if there's any um, disagreement with the way the policy is written, there really needs to be um, something that states how um, the public can, um, you know, put in an appeal uh, to have someone look at the policy. Um, so you've all had had a chance to take a look at that. But you know, during the policy committee, um, I'll I'll address the policy in in just a moment. But um, during the policy committee, uh, we also um, discussed about adding a note on um, the appeals process to all our existing policy. Um, we we noted that it really doesn't make sense to to do that right now and just append it because then we have to, you know, review and and approve all the policy all over again. But as new policies come, you're going to see that kind of note at the bottom. Um, uh, of of any any policies that we're approving going forward. Um, and again, before we dive in, I'm just going to go over the quick meeting, meeting minutes, meeting notes from our our policy committee. We also took a look at the privacy and confidentiality policy. That's just something that, again, we need to know and review it. Uh, so no changes uh, there. Um, on the piano policy, uh, we discussed um, the feasibility of the Piano Me app, which is a rental service um, for for people out of town who might want to uh, rent our piano. For now, we just felt it wasn't right for 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 the Grafton Public Library. But we can always, um, you know, add it later. Uh, but I didn't want that piece to kind of delay getting this policy um, in front of you guys because we've had the piano for for a time now and and we'd like to get that out to the public. We also talked about um, lessons, uh, giving lessons on the piano. Uh, we don't really prohibit tutoring, so there really isn't any reason why a lesson couldn't be, um, you know, uh, done on on the piano if if somebody requested you know, the piano to do so. Another thing we discussed was uh, the code of conduct update. And I think that I don't know if it should have been on on the agenda tonight, but we won't vote to approve it since it's not on the agenda. And it was really just to to match um, the age thirteen, uh, which is in the uh, unattended child policy. Um, and then we also uh, moved some of the uh, procedures uh, to get some better formatting um, in the document to be more clear, uh, moving those to the bottom. Um, we discussed the security camera policy uh, very briefly. Um, I guess there's been some requests to provide footage to the public, um, that the cameras may may not have picked up. Um, so we're going to run that that policy by legal and that question by legal. If we are, you know, required to to provide, you know, footage that the cameras at the library, um, you know, receive to the public rather than just uh, by police request. Um, we also uh, are working on the art display policy. You know, I I think generally there's, uh, it's a really fine policy. Um, it talks about putting um, uh, new art displays or or encouraging new art displays to be kind of rotated in on a monthly basis. Um, we may hold off in uh, voting on this policy for a while until we can think about um, you know, the impact it might have on the uh, the current staff and in their ability to to to, you know, work with the public. Um, you know, on this process. Um, so that's kind of what we discussed. Um, but I will open the floor to uh, the first policy. I think, is it the piano one you have in front of, in front of you? Which one's in front of you? I can't see it.
That's the appeals process.
Do we need to vote on the appeals process? It's not technically a policy, but you go on the website on the policy page and then be linked on all our policies.
Yeah, I think it probably requires some sort of acceptance by the um, by the the board of trustees. Since this is what we're expecting the 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 public to follow if they have any, a- any dispute within the policy. But I will certainly hear it here a motion if uh, one wants to be made to approve this being posted along with the um, uh, the policies.
I will make a motion to approve the appeals process and to have it posted along with the policies. Um, also just want to thank you for having the foresight to put this together.
Yes, I can. Second the motion and second the, thank you.
All right, um, any further discussion? Yes, Beth?
I I want to recognize um, Kristy Proctor, who is from the Grafton Accessibility Advisory Commission, who said you need an appeals process and here's what it needs to include. Um, and gave us some really good guidance. Thank you to her.
Wonderful. All right. All right, uh, if there's no other comments, uh, we can vote on this. Um, and uh, we'll go, uh, Doug?
Doug, I.
Aaron?
Aaron, I.
Martin?
Martin, I.
John?
John, I.
Stephanie?
Uh, Stephanie, I.
And Karen, I. Okay, and then the next one on the list, Aaron, is the privacy and confidentiality, confidentiality policy?
Yep, um, I don't believe there's any updates to this one, but it's really for our familiarity and just to reapprove it uh, from time to time. Um, but certainly, John or Beth, um, or Debbie chime in if I'm misspeaking.
So this is the. So this is the same one that was previously approved, just reviewed, but no updates?
Beth is shaking her head no. I think she's looking for her unmute button.
I have so many documents open and I scroll down and I can't get to the unmute. I'm sorry. Um, this is brand new. It was brought to the policy committee in the past and drafted and then brought to, this looks like minutes, I'm sorry, and then brought to legal. So it's a new policy. We have not had a privacy and confidentiality policy before. And what's unique about it is it really deals with library records. It's not about your privacy on the computer. It's not so much about who's in the building. But the idea is that your intellectual pursuits, your use of the library is private and the programs and everything. Registration. So it is, so it is a new policy. So if people had a chance to read it, great. If they feel like they didn't have sufficient time and we're not ready to move forward, that's also okay.
So, um, do we have a motion to approve this? And then we can discuss if we're ready to vote on it.
I personally would like to review it and look at it next month for approval.
Okay.
This one, sorry, did you say it had gone through legal, Beth?
Yeah, as part of the process when the last policy subcommittee, like we drafted it, we worked on it, we sent it to legal and then it never got passed that or brought to the board. So I was like, this is close to done. Can we?
Yeah, that's a great point. Thank you, Beth. It was one, yeah, it was the one that the previous policy committee had worked on. That's why I was misremembering it. Okay, yeah, so if, we don't need to hear a motion to approve this one. If nobody's willing to make a motion, we can, we can table this one.
All right, and then the final one on here is the piano policy?
Yep, and I talked about it a little bit before. But, you know, we've been working on this one. John and I knew to the policy committee. And, you know, Debbie did a really fantastic job, you know, putting this together. And, you know, one of the, one of the really great things about, you know, that made us feel like we're moving in the right direction with our policy is at this meeting this past weekend, they said, you know, not beg, borrow and steal, but really kind of see what other people are doing. I mean, that's what these policies are for. And, you know, if somebody's done it before, then, you know, take a look at what they did, see what works, try it. If it doesn't work, make modifications, make it your own. And so that was good to hear that endorsement. So I think Debbie probably borrowed a little bit, but, you know, I do appreciate her work on this. So thank you.
Okay, so, um, are we ready to vote on this policy or? No?
Can I ask a question?
Certainly, Doug.
The piano use proficiency application. Do we have a copy of that? Was that in your? Like, is that just a written document that someone fills out?
Yeah, there was a link and it's linked here. I can try and
Oh, I'm sorry, there is a link on here.
And I click on it, edit hyperlink, open hyperlink. Thanks Debbie, who put this room together. So it's first name, last name, age, where do you live, in case you destroy it.
It's, you're not sharing it if you want, if you whoops, yeah.
Two years on Zoom and I still don't know how it works.
Yeah, so while you're pulling that up, so this was something kind of interesting, which, which I brought to the policy committee, was, you know, it seemed to be initially written as, you know, a tool for the library to kind of give concerts, right? And, you know, part of the discussion was, how do we make this piano accessible in a way that it's not going to be abused? And so that people can kind of walk in and use the piano if it's available, right? So one of the things we talked about, which, you know, you see in front of you here is, you know, really just kind of agreeing that you have some proficiency with the piano and you're not going to go in there and use it like you don't know how to use the instrument. It's like giving somebody a trumpet who doesn't know how to play the trumpet, you know what I mean? They're not going to really do much, much good with it. So this is a really, you know, valuable asset for the library. And we want to make sure that it's properly cared for and that people have a genuine, you know, appreciation for the instrument and or some proficiency with it. So it really can be very basic. It's just really saying that, yes, I know how to use the piano.
All right, Martin?
You just, on the, the proficiency application is up on the screen now. Could you, Beth, can you scroll it down so we can see what's at the bottom? There we go. Thank you.
My staff are walking in front of my window with trumpets on their head, closing the building.
Oh, cool.
And can I, the purpose of this is simply to make sure that the person is what?
This was a suggestion from somebody on the Capitol Campaign who was very concerned that only people who know how to play the piano play the piano.
Well, then a beginner would not be able to play.
I think they would. I think we just want to know what their level is.
Yeah, a beginner knows how to play the piano. That's somebody who's, who's taken some lessons. They can play, you know, nursery rhymes. They know how the instrument works. They know how to sit down and play the instrument. That's a beginner.
And is is the object, so someone is not just coming there and making a nuisance of themselves banging on the piano. I mean, seriously, is that?
Yeah.
Really, you have to try really hard to hurt it. And it needs a breaking in period and every key does need to be hit. So like if someone wants to do, what is it, arpeggios?
I've been working on my arpeggio, so I'm happy to work that for you.
Yeah, it's been about 70 years since I took piano lessons and didn't work out too well then. But I'm looking at this, there is something in the in the policy that says libraries, library staff and volunteers may use the piano to practice at no charge. Will library staff and volunteers also be required to complete a piano use proficiency application?
I don't see why not.
It seems to me it should be yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Particularly vis a vis volunteers. Okay.
I'm also happy to say it's unnecessary. Like, maybe we don't need it.
I, well.
I like the idea because it just, it's, they're accepting the policy at the same time, right? By signing it, they've accepted that they've read through the policy.
Yeah. I mean, I look at it as, you know, what, we start off with it and then it can always be tweaked, correct? Yeah, all right, Debbie?
Uh, can you hear me? The, what we discussed in the policy committee was having this piano proficiency form to fill out was so that people could, let's say, Aaron wanted to stop by the library if he was there with one of his kids doing a program and wanted to go in and just play the piano practice for a while, is that they fill this out. A staff member takes a quick minute to go in there and be like, okay, yeah, you do know what you're doing. We're going to put your name on the spreadsheet. And that way it's accessible for all the library staff to check to see that next time Aaron comes in and wants to play the piano, that he is already approved for that. So there's a, there's an approval process to just have access for just general open play. We are concerned that it may not get used as much as possible if, if we didn't allow drop-ins.
Okay. All right, um, all right. So are we ready to vote on this tonight or would everyone or not?
I would strongly suggest that, that we unless people truly object to some, some elements of this policy that we vote this, so that we can vote on this, we can start getting some use of the piano. You know, I know it doesn't make, it's not always great to put a policy into effect and then change it six months from now, but we feel that this is, it's written well enough that our public can start, you know, using the piano.
Okay, very good. So would someone like to make a motion?
One more comment. I don't know that we will be able to still open up the piano for general use until we get the question answered about how it's insured, I believe, or maybe it was, that was just for the Piano Me app part of it. Like, in order to use the Piano Me service, you needed to have the piano insured. But since we took that out of the policy, I think there was still a question of whether that's the Capitol Campaign or the, or the town to ensure that.
Is that still an open question, Beth?
Yeah.
I didn't realize that. Okay, so I'll follow up with Beth and the Capitol Campaign.
All right, so based on this policy, should we hold off on that? Because is insurance part of this policy? I don't believe it.
I don't think so.
I'm trying to remember. It talks about maintenance, it talks about food, it talks about drinks. Things like that.
I think the general concern was more, let's make sure it's insured before we start letting people play on it.
Okay, so I think, can we vote on the policy and just not start using it right away until it is? Okay.
I think so.
All right. Aaron, would you like the honor of making the motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the, what's the name of the policy?
The piano policy.
I make a motion to approve the piano policy.
Okay, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Okay, thanks, John. Any further questions or discussion? All right, seeing, oh.
I wanted to mention one thing that had come up. I'm not sure if this is the right time to mention it, but the concern about ownership and ownership of the piano had come up. And I was looking through the trustee handbook for the Massachusetts Libraries Association. Or the Massachusetts Board of Library Trustees. Anyway, there's a, there's a part in there referencing MGL, which is the Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 78, Section 11, that states, "The board shall have the custody and management of the library and reading room and all and of all property owned by the town relating thereto." So I think that would sounds like it would cover us in that situation in that we have the power to kind of control what happens to the piano in the future.
All right, very impressive quotation there. All right, any other comments? All right, so I'll go around. All right, Doug?
Doug, I.
Aaron?
Aaron, I.
Martin?
Martin, I.
John?
John, I.
Stephanie?
Stephanie, I.
And Karen, I. All right, that's passed. We're going to skip over the executive session. And then we will go on to our director's report and statistics with Beth.
Thanks. Just give me one moment to call it up. Thanks. We had over 5,000 visitors in September. We were open 239 hours, 23 programs to 184 attendees. I did finish the ARIS financial report that I mentioned. Meeting rooms got 110 reservations for 338 participants, only one no-show. And we also used our meeting space for staff that needed to either, you know, meet with each other or booked the room to test equipment to make sure that everything in this space worked. So it was an additional 22 meetings just for staffing. That doesn't include our programs, which I already mentioned. We had only 11 low-coverage instances in September where we had to pull somebody from another department or call an attempt or close a department. There was one building closure due to lack of adequate staffing. We do still have a minimum staffing policy of four people, which means we close a department and then redistribute staff. We welcome Cynthia O'Neill, our new Adult Services Librarian, who is our technical services person and cataloger, who right after Labor Day, cataloged a whole bunch of things that came in over the summer and is now, as I mentioned, ready to take on ordering. As of the end of September, we weren't able to close FY22, but we have since, I think, finished up and done that ARIS report reporting. Um, what else? I attended a Capitol Summit to look at FY23 requests, which included money to restore and now, I forget the word, it's very late, to take care of our old furniture. We had a request in a town meeting that we since pulled because we wanted to do a little bit more research on the age and condition and whether restoration is actually the best thing for our historic chairs, which we think are 50 years old minimum. We also have a Capitol request for the cupola, which is aging. It's at least been 20 years since we restored that. There is a grant that Mass Historic Commission will be offering. Letters of intent are due on the 14th of November. And if we can get Mass Historic Commission to pay for half of the cupola cost, then that reduces the impact for either CPC, trustees, Capitol Campaign, General Fund to pick up any remaining cost. The verbal estimate we got for restoring our cupola was about $80,000. I'm having a lot of trouble pinning down a contractor to get a quote and have asked building department to help me get a contractor to respond with a written quote for that cost. Part of the Capitol Summit was also creating an inventory, which we are well positioned to do because we just bought a whole bunch of things. So we've been working on an electronics inventory since getting new computers and new office space, but we really need an accounting of, we have a refrigerator, we have a microwave, we, you know, we have a 3D printer, we have this office furniture and patron furniture. We need to know when all of it was purchased, where it was bought, how much it's worth. And then start to have a plan to replace it because while we have this beautiful new building, it's getting traffic, it's getting used. And pretty soon things, you know, will start, start looking worn. The hospitality industry usually has turnover of three to five years. So, you know, hotels, hospitals, those kinds of places, like they're doing new furniture and carpeting every three to five years. It's usually more like a 10 to 20-year lifespan for public libraries because it's hard to get those budget dollars. But part of the reason that we still have a Capitol Campaign existing is not just to take care of the push for the construction project completion, but to take care of ongoing capital needs like carpet or new computers to, again, alleviate that burden from town of Grafton. So just because we have the new building does not mean those capital needs go away. I already went over the construction update, IT update and COVID update. Children's Storytime Programming returned in September. If you missed it, there was a school bus featuring staff members' school portraits that was really fun down in the children's room. We had a little guessing game. We also returned Storytime to Willard House and Clock Museum, who we have a wonderful partnership with. We have one of their Willard clocks now in the historic reading room and have a big program coming. And every trustee is cordially invited to come on Monday, November 14th at 7 o'clock, where we're going to have Robert C. Chaney do a lecture on horology, which is the study of time and the role of the Willards in town and the clocks, artisan clocks that they produced. And that's to be followed by our first public, open to the public wine and cheese reception. I understand they are doing all of the permitting for that, but their entire board for the museum is coming and they would really love to see our entire board and select board. We'll get them an invitation as well on Monday, November 14th. So part of my work in September was helping to organize that, getting the clock in place, doing information or referral for here's what you need for a one-day beer and wine license and a food permit for Willard House. Services, we've talked a lot about teen services tonight. Our teen librarian also attended both middle school and high school open houses. At one, she had a table and in another, she talked. And she probably talked to over 100 parents of teenagers and then created a resource flyer that both principals further distributed to parents. And we did a lot of promotion of tutor.com at all of our September open houses. And as a result, like, we had, you know, 63 uses in September, which is a pretty big number for tutor.com. For those that don't know, that is a free-to-you tutoring service. It's available from 2:00 to 9:00 p.m. daily. They also will look at resumes for adults. They'll help at college-level tutoring. You can send them a college or English essay and they'll return it within, I think, two days, it might be 24 hours. You can do a sample math problem and they'll do it step by step and send it back to you, as well as one-on-one real-time tutoring in K through 12 subjects. It's still underutilized and a really great resource. And we always have a big push for it in September. We had an amazing display for September, which was National Library Card We had an amazing display for September, which was National Library Card signup month to celebrate all the varied things that we offer. Right now, I have the bulbocenter at home to plant my daffodils for next spring. We're not just about books. We have lots of things that go out. The volunteer program is in process of resuming. We did just have 14 shelving volunteers who put in 87 hours worth of work in September. Gardening volunteers continue to beautify the grounds and they have an informal meetup group on Tuesday mornings where if you show up, they'll show you which are the weeds and which are not the weeds, remind you not to throw things over in the wetlands and show you hot where to put your weeded items. So that custodial can offload them to the brush dump for us. We've continued our outreach program with Crescent Manor Book Wagon. Eight participants checked out 18 items and requested eight new books. And we delivered 28 materials to homebound patrons. So that service continued, continues. If you're, you know, laid low with anything from, you know, pregnancy bedrest to a broken leg to COVID, we'll drop off materials for you. You just need to give us a call. We had 210 computer use sessions, not including wireless, which for some reason is still not trackable. So we continue to push the town to get IT, a way for us to actually get a handle on how many people jump on our wireless every day, including after hours. And it's always available from the parking lot or the patios. We answered 280 reference questions, which seems a little bit low, but we placed 824 holes on materials that patrons asked for in the month of September. We had about eight different book discussion groups, five of which I think we're responsible for. Grafton ukulele musicians and Saturday afternoon knitting group met up. We promoted the October mini golf program with a special golf exhibit in our display case. And then did a lot of work on putting together our October mental health awareness programming, which was in part paid for from a grant for the Coalition for a Healthy Greater Worcester, in one of their foundations. Friends Bag fundraiser, I think I mentioned friends already. Fundraiser continues. And then we have a very long, I gave you the whole, I think, yes and no log. We get compliments about the self-check. We get complaints about the self-check. Heidi gets a lot of compliments on the costuming that she wears. You know, people love the hand sanitizer, they hate the hand sanitizer. They love our hours, they hate our hours. We did finally have a visit from Chandler to address the door timing issue. However, I did not go in that way today. I tried to go in the staff entrance. So I need to test it out and see if it's a little bit better. We had complaints that the door is very heavy and does not stay open long enough. And people don't realize that as they pass through that vestibule, they should wave at the sensor to get the door to open longer. So I'll be seeing if, if that's been resolved. It's been an ongoing issue. The whole report went out. I am happy to take questions.
All right. Thank you so much, Beth. It's been a busy month. So any questions for Beth on her report and statistics? No? All right. Okay, so we'll move on to public input. And I'll start by addressing Marilyn's question that, does the town own the piano? Doug, do you know that one or who owns it?
I mean, that's what I was referencing when I mentioned that to Beth. So, you know, the, the Capitol campaign, you know, through the generosity of many donors in town, pu cured and restored that piano. And we're in the process of transferring that to the town as a donation. But we need to come up with kind of an official statement so that the town can accept it and then therefore ensure it.
Okay. All right, that makes sense. And Amy has mentioned, she has a comment as well. And I'll just say thank you to everybody for holding out on this. I think this is the latest we have ever gone, so.
It's exciting to have people listening in though.
Yes.
Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Okay, so I just want to thank the trustees and the library staff who are here for doing all this hard work. The library is wonderful. I use it regularly. And so does my family. My name is Amy Marr and I live at 36 Ferry Street. I'll disclose for the record that I am on the school committee, but I'm just here as a mom. I'm here to state for the record that the teen room of the library should only be closed as an absolute last resort and with as much notice given as possible. Earlier tonight, Beth spoke very eloquently and with a lot of feeling about the mental health crisis we are facing. It's not just here in Grafton, it's all over the country. I'm reading articles every day about schools, libraries, all kinds of facilities for kids that are just, it's a disaster. And it's going to take some empathy and some patience to get through it. Everyone is hurting, kids and adults alike. Beth's exactly right about that. But some kids lash out with bad behavior and others need safe spaces to be with friends for their mental well-being. Children with autism, generalized anxiety and other conditions require reliable schedules and structure. The abrupt closing of the teen room a few weeks ago and the sudden barring of teens from that room for a week disrupted the structure and schedule of several teens in our community who simply didn't have the skills to cope with the sudden change. I personally know a few who were so traumatized by being turned away that first day. They don't want to go back to the library now, despite being regular visitors before. These are kids that have spent two years in their bedrooms and were just starting to come out of their shells and interact with each other in the teen room. And now they're scared to go back. I implore the director and the board to do everything possible, and I mean everything. To prevent sudden closures of the teen room and to use more than Facebook to notify the community and its teens of scheduled changes for that room. I don't know if the teen newsletter email list could be used, other social media platforms that the kids are on, like Instagram, TikTok, Twitter. That's where they are. They're not on Facebook. Again, I want to thank everybody for all of your hard work. Thank you for your time and attention to this matter. I know it's difficult. There's no easy answer. There's no silver bullet. But we need everybody's help to think outside the box, navigate the crisis and start with empathy for the kids who aren't acting out as well as for those who are. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you for your comment, Amy. All right, any other public comments? I just want to give, give everyone an extra second to find the unmute button here. We know that's an issue. All right, all right. So I'll just fill the space with, would love to see everyone at the library for trick or treating. Beth, it sounds like you're going to have people come in through the front to trick or treat at the various desks. Okay. And that sort of thing. The next policy subcommittee meeting is Wednesday, November 2nd at seven o'clock on Zoom. Oh, one, one second Debbie, so I don't lose my train of thought. And our next Board of Library Trustees meetings, it's a week early because of Thanksgiving. So for those of you who have it on your calendar on the fourth Wednesday, move it to the third Wednesday, which is November 16th. So we have it on that day and yet, yes Debbie?
I was going to add that we do have TikTok now.
I have no idea how to use TikTok.
I'm learning. I'm learning. There was a video that I actually had some of the teens help me with that we put on TikTok and we put it on Instagram. And combined between TikTok and Instagram, it had 11,000 views. So we're very excited about that. Also, I wanted to bring up, if anybody can swing by the Emotional Wellness Fair too, we're having that on Saturday from 10 to 4. And we have a lot of local businesses that are coming out. It'd be nice to see the trustees come by and say hi to the local businesses that are taking their time to be with us that day also.
All right, very good. Yes, I, I can't wait to see the pictures from goats and giggles personally, so. Okay, and Amy is asking, can you tell us the account info for Instagram and TikTok?
I leave there both Grafton Pub Lib, but might need to.
No, Instagram is Grafton Public Library. Grafton Public Library and then TikTok is Grafton Pub Lib.
All right, I'm not sure who put up their hand first. Let's see, Aaron. Well, it's strange. All right, never mind. All right, Aaron.
Yeah, I just, I think there was some confusion with the policy committee and the trustee meeting. I think that the town, when we submit the meeting agendas, they tend, they tend to look at the file naming and not necessarily the file content. And I think that's why, I think the name of the agenda tonight actually had the date of last week, right? So I think especially the upcoming meeting for the next month. Seeing that it's a week early, I just want to just double check that, A, the town knows which night. You know, each meeting is supposed to be posted and that, you know, we're also paying close attention to the content of those files, not just the file names themselves.
And Stephanie?
Hi, so I think that we have both of those handles posted places, but if we could just, not tonight, obviously, but you know, in the next couple of days, if we could just check to make sure that they're posted on the town website on Facebook, on Twitter, Instagram, so that all that information is cross-posted as, as well as just on boards at the library to make sure that that information is out there. And then second, I just thank you, everybody who came on. I think this is the, the most other participants that I've seen since my time on the board at once. I do want to just encourage you that even though we only meet once a month as a full board. I'm very often where I'm being notified of things that we need to talk about or discuss further. So if you are being made aware of something or have some experience, please take advantage of our email address. And we also welcome solutions to problems that you are seeing. So if, not saying that we will adopt all of them, but always welcome any feedback for, for solutions as well. So thank you, everyone.
All right. Okay, if that is it, I will call the meeting adjourned at 9:24. Oh, no, Aaron.
Need a motion to adjourn.
Oh.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All right, any further discussion? All right, all right. Let's start with Doug.
Doug, I.
Aaron?
I.
Martin?
I.
John?
John, I.
Stephanie?
I.
Aaron, I. And now I'll call meeting adjourned and it's still 9:24.